This is the City of Bloomington Common Council Meeting for January 20th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
I'm here.
Volin?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Scambaluri?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome colleagues and welcome to everyone in attendance this evening. We'll go down through the agenda summation. First, we'll have approval of minutes. Then we'll move down to reports. I'll remind folks that we have a maximum of 20 minutes set aside for each portion of this section. But other reports, we'll have reports from council members. Then we'll have reports from the mayor and city offices. Tonight, we have a report from the Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs, their annual report. And the mayor would like to speak this evening. Then we move to council committees. And finally, we have public or comment from the public. I will remind people that these are on items not on the agenda. Then we'll move down to appointments to boards and commissions. Then we'll have legislation for second readings and resolutions. We have one this evening that is ordinance 21-01 to amend the City of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning seven acres of property from residential medium lot R2 to employment EM regarding 1600 West Fountain Drive Comcast petitioner. Then we'll move down to legislation for first readings to amend Title 8 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district regarding the Core Building Historic District. And then ordinance 21-05 to amend Title 8 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district regarding the Boxman Mitchell Building Historic District. Then we're going to have additional public comment. Then we'll deal with matters regarding the council schedule. And after that, then we shall adjourn. Okay, we'll move back to approval, approval of minutes.
President Sims, I move that the minutes from June 1st, 2005, June 15th, 2005, October 5th, 2005, and November 16th, 2005 be approved.
Second.
Thank you, it's been properly moved and second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Parliament, Jerry.
Oh, nothing. I was waiting for you to call the vote and approval.
Pardon?
I was just waiting for you to read the vote tally and say that the minutes were approved.
I'm so sorry.
If I confused you by unmuting.
No, 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 I did, I was, okay. That was approved nine to zero. And now we'll move down to reports. I'll start up with as I see them. Councilmember Volin?
No report except I'm very happy to see this day finally come, thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you, I, as many of my friends and family today have just been ecstatic with the inauguration. The traditional, but yet untraditional approach during COVID crisis. I thought the mood and the tone was just pitch perfect from the very beginning to the very end. And the hard work that lies ahead for this new administration, I wish the best to President Biden, Vice President Harris. They have big jobs ahead of them. And I understand congratulations are also in order for Ms. Don Johnson. And Mayor Hamilton happens to be her husband. She was sworn in today as senior counselor with the DOJ in the Office of Legal Counsel. And we all know her good work in this, this community. And we know she's been there before assisting with legal matters in, in the nation's capital. And so we wish her well as well today. Very good news all across the board, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Councilmember Rallo?
I have no report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scambaluri.
All of that, all of that, it's a good day. Other than that, no report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I'd like to thank all of the staff of Beacon Inc. and the board and all the volunteers who came together to establish a low barrier winter shelter for members of our community experiencing homelessness. It was an amazing task done in just like 10 days. I just am really, really impressed with how quickly that came together. And it's just a godsend for people in our community. So thank you to the Reverend Forrest Gilmore and everybody at the Beacon and everybody who chipped in. I also wanted to say that I, I hope you all had a good experience on Martin Luther King Day. I attended a conference that IU put together where we had the honor of listening to Angela Davis and Alicia Garza, two just incredible women who have pushed forward on racial justice issues. And that evening, I was so excited by one of the panels, which was on the progress or lack of progress from slavery to mass incarceration. That I, I actually skipped the evening session with the City of Bloomington, I'm sorry. But I watched the documentary 13th by Avra Deverney. And it was just, well, it was depressing as hell, but it was really eye opening how our society has rebranded African Americans as criminal and mass incarceration as really just a shameful way that we have treated a large segment of our society. So a lot of work to be done. I hope you all took some inspiration on MLK Day. And of course, I agree with my colleagues that this is a wonderful day for the United States with a president who has intelligence and common sense in the White House. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Councilmember Flaherty?
Sure, just a few brief items tonight. First, I wanted to let the public, members of the public know that I'm hosting my first constituent meeting of the year next Monday at 5:30 PM. There will be a Zoom link possibly on the council's website, but certainly on my own council Facebook page at facebook.com/FlahertyforBloomington. I plan to host them on the third Monday of the, of the month throughout the rest of the year. But I went with the fourth Monday this month because of MLK Junior Day, of course, which we were all celebrating on Monday. And lucky enough for Councilmember Piedmont Smith, the City of Bloomington's program with Dr. Khalid Al Hakim, which was great, is recorded and available on the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration page on the city's website. So anybody who missed the program can see that there. It was a really good program and inspiring as well. And really impressive what, what that commission put together. And with support of city staff, of course, as well for technically difficult times to be producing a celebration. So appreciate all the work that went into that and thank our commission and staff members for that. And that's it for me tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Councilmember Smith?
I have no report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi, no report, thank you.
Thank you. What I'd like to report, first of all, I, to join in on the congratulations for Don Johnson. I had kind of been hoping and was wondering if I'd hear this kind of news. And particularly in light what happened to the last time. And the administration wasn't able to use her very vast and expert abilities during that time. So I'm looking forward and very congratulatory for her to be able to serve this nation. I'd also like to thank the organizers of the city's Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration Program. It was jam packed with information, with entertainment. Had a great host. With particular acknowledgement for the African American Choral Ensemble and our speaker. It was just exciting that evening. And it made me again feel proud to be a Bloomingtonian. And lastly, I just want to share with everyone else how proud I'm feeling with having our inauguration today. A peaceful transition of power. Well, halfway anyway, I think. A peaceful transition of power. And the most important thing is that I feel a sense, a renewed sense of hope and renewed sense of possibilities as we move forward on into this new term. So all in all, a good day for the United States of America. Okay. Thank you all for your comments. We'll move down to the mayor and city offices, their reports. I think first we'll hear from the Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs, their annual report. I don't know who will be presenting this evening.
To leave, we've got Nico Sigler here and he should be able to unmute and hear his video.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sigler, how are you?
I didn't know I was able to do that, otherwise I would have done that and spoke up, my bad.
All right, that's quite all right. Thank you for presenting the report and please proceed.
All right. Good evening, council members. My name is Nico Sigler. I am the president of the City's Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs. And tonight I will be giving the commission's annual report. To start it off, I would like to say on behalf of all the members of the commission, we would like to thank Mayor John Hamilton and the city council for supporting this effort and for allowing us to be part of it. The Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs works to identify and address issues that, that impact the Hispanic and Latino populations in Bloomington, especially in the areas of health, education, public safety, and cultural competency. We recognize that our work has been affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. For example, we had to cancel our annual Blacky Brown Arts Festival this year. We hope to bring it back in 2021, though. Despite this, the commission was able to find new successes in some areas and build on existing programs from prior years. The following are some of the accomplishments and projects that CHLA has worked on throughout the year. Thanks in great measure to the hard work of Josefa Madrigal. The Fiesta de la Tonia was made possible and the CHLA was there tabling the event. The commission would also like to thank Josefa for all she does for the CHLA and the Latino community here in Bloomington. The City of Bloomington is lucky to have her on staff. We have also participated in community conversations with the Monroe County Community School Corporation. These conversations introduce members of our school community to the work of the CHLA. During these conversations, we discuss ways our school communities can support our Hispanic and Latino students, families, and staff in our community. We also went over identifying ways that school communities can continue to build their cultural competencies and foster culturally responsive and ongoing practices and policies that positively impact Hispanic and Latino students. This has been an unusual year, but we believe the commission has done its best during this, during these unique circumstances. We hope and expect that our work in the community will continue to grow and improve in the coming year. Thank you. Also, if you have any questions, I'm here for that, too.
Thank you, Mr. Sigler. Do we have any questions of Mr. Sigler from council members? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Sigler.
Thank you, y'all have a good night.
All right, thank you. And now we have our mayor, John Hamilton, present, who would like to use some time during this comment period. Mayor Hamilton?
Thank you very much. It's nice to be with you, following Nico and Josefa. Thanks for all your work, too. And I think this is my first meeting this year with the council. So congratulations to your new officers and I look forward to a good year of work with you all. I also appreciate how many of us got to see that Biden inaugural message of unity. His message to quote, "A great nation of good people." Where you could feel a recommitment to competence, to public service, to healing and ending political polarization, to truth and compassion. As he, as he said, "Not an end to disagreements or debate, but a focus on," as he put it, "the common objects of our love." I, I heard in his words, in echo, "We have a great community filled with good people, with a hunger for community and with disagreements, of course, but with also many shared values, including compassion and the value of housing as a right for every person." I wanted tonight to give an update about housing insecurity in our community, which is very real and threatens to get worse, including challenges for people experiencing homelessness. I think you know my deep commitment to affordable housing. In my professional life for decades in community development and at Family and Social Services Administration and in my personal life, including helping found Shalom, now Beacon, 20 years ago with Shirley St. John, Joe Emerson, and many others, serving on and chairing its board and volunteering overnight with Interfaith Winter Shelter. I care deeply about improving housing for all. I wanted tonight to frame things in the City of Bloomington and housing. Housing first is our goal, getting people into safe, decent housing as quickly as possible and for the long term. Just as a quick summary, we have about 1,400 units of affordable housing that's overseen by the Bloomington Housing Authority. I know you're aware of that. And in addition, over the last five years, we've developed 850 affordable units, over 1,300 bedrooms, including particularly three new developments focused on supportive housing for those experiencing homelessness or with other special needs at Crawford 2, at Southern Knoll, and at Kinzer Flats. I'll just note that that overall affordable housing support has come from a few million dollars of city money that has leveraged well over $100 million of overall investments in, in that affordable housing. Together in Recover Forward, also, we took strong steps to invest in our social safety net in the last months, including, as you know, we added $500,000 to the Jack Hopkins Program. I convened last spring a task force on food, housing, childcare, and personal services that steered millions of dollars into those basic needs during the pandemic. We are lowering housing costs with energy efficiency investments and making new investments in affordable homeownership as well. And just in the past 30 days, I have met with housing funders and providers and asked Tina Peterson of the Community Foundation and Ephraim Pfefferman of United Way to continue their leadership with a regional effort to identify shared strategies on housing insecurity for our community and our region. Regarding COVID and, and housing, we have expanded and strengthened the emergency shelter network with a new isolation shelter at a local hotel that our community has supported, an expanded women's shelter. We've collectively expanded physical space in existing shelters. And as Councilmember Piedmont Smith mentioned just yesterday, another new shelter at the warehouse opened managed by Beacon. And now despite all this good work and amid the ongoing pandemic and economic crisis, many people are still struggling in our community with lost jobs, with poverty, with substance use disorder or mental illness or domestic violence. And in November and December, Seminary Park area increasingly became a place where people gathered during the day. At times, sometimes regular day shelters were closed or limited due to COVID. And tents and structures were used in the gatherings and often left overnight. While few, if any, people were sleeping overnight before December, at the request of providers and partners, the city refrained from removing tents overnight or from public rights of way through the holiday period in order to give time for individualized assistance to identify safer sleeping options. For a time thereafter, overnight camping did occur there and increase there. Indeed, as you all know, one individual tragically died Christmas Eve from exposure to the cold in that downtown location. I, I wanted to share some, some key facts about the recent weeks of intense collaborations. First, there have been very strong partnerships that exist with the city and providers who are helping individuals, including Centerstone, Wheeler, New Hope, Middleway, Beacon, and other direct care providers who are helping individuals find safer options and services that are needed. I also want to call out and thank city staff who have been working extraordinarily hard in those collaborations, including Beverly Callender Anderson, Mike DeKoff, Adam Wason, Paula McDevitt, Mary Catherine Carmichael, and their staffs. And I know you appreciate the work they do on behalf of all of us as well. Second, beyond those collaborations, I want to note it is not safe to congregate in public rights of way, especially next to a busy street overnight or anytime, especially during potentially slick or icy conditions of winter where one traffic accident could have terrible consequences to those next to the road. Third, I want to point out it is not safe to sleep outdoors in an Indiana winter. Of course, the death of an individual Christmas Eve made that very poignant. I know from my own experience with Interfaith Winter Shelter, how powerful the sense of at least safety in the night, overnight for folks who faced such challenges, how important having those safe places of respite was and is. And, and fourth, in terms of kind of facts about where we are, the emergency shelter beds in our community are in numbers well in excess of those sleeping overnight in seminary. And they're available in significant numbers beyond those who were sleeping overnight in seminary every night. As mentioned, including two new low barrier shelters in the last month, the women's shelter and the one at the warehouse managed by Beacon. I want to thank all of the partners who worked so hard, as I've mentioned, many of them, over the many weeks of outreach, helping individuals find better options. We went from as many as 20 sleeping eventually in the park in late December, down to 15 gradually with this kind of work, and then down to 12, and then down to eight. And we were counting regularly how many people were actually overnighting. And then last Thursday, down to three who intended to sleep outside. And finally, those two, two of those agreed were helped to go to other places and one remained for some time. I know some disagree with the decision to insist that individuals not sleep overnight in city park locations or in rights of way next to streets. But working with our partners, I believe we are protecting safety and well-being of all. I, I, you know, I urged that we enact new revenue last fall, including $250,000 annually for increased homeless services. You weren't ready to take that step then. I believe the need continues and indeed may be growing. And I will continue to ask for new revenue for that purpose and others. I hope all of us, I know, who share the values of housing security and advocate for additional housing services will join in support in the near future. I really appreciate the time tonight. I know how busy you are. I appreciate the shared commitment to compassion and to housing as a right for all and, and appreciate working together toward those shared goals. I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any and appreciate your, again, your time tonight and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. Do we have any questions from council, Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. Tonight, I want to express my appreciation to you and your staff for working with, to bring people together from the direct care providers to work on this difficult topic. My question was about the low barrier shelter at the warehouse. I understand that the city also played a role in that. Can, could, could you tell us a bit more about how that came to be?
Sure, and, and thank you for all the work together on this. I actually urged, I spoke with Reverend Gilmore, I think January 2nd, and urged that they consider expanding that space. The warehouse has such space in it where they had moved friend's place and urged them to do so. I'm really glad they did and have. We worked very intensively, particularly Jason Moore, the fire chief. I didn't, I don't think I listed him in my litany. He, he too has been very involved in helping assure that that building and that location is safe for those and, and, and worked quite intensively over weekends, I know, to help make that happen. And I, I, it is difficult singling anybody out because all those people I mentioned and so many frontline staff have worked very, very hard to try to help our community live the the compassion and assistance that we want to see. And I, look, I know not everybody agrees with these steps and they're, they're certainly valid approaches that people can advocate. I'm, I'm proud of the work that our community has done and will do to keep, trying to keep everybody safe in this community.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. Mayor Hamilton, I know that you have convened several meetings over the course of this, this community. Obviously, a huge community need. And there's going to be another meeting coming up on the 25th that I have been invited to attend and I'm happy to, that is going to be convened by the United Way and the Community Foundation through the leadership of Ephraim Pfefferman and Tina Peterson. What do you hope will be further accomplished there? I know funding is a huge part of this. And what do you anticipate will be coming from this meeting?
Well, thank you for that question. You know, early in the pandemic in March, knowing the challenges our social safety net would have, I asked five philanthropic leaders, including those two and, and three others, to, to, to form a task force to think about how to coordinate the emergency needs for housing, for childcare, for food, et cetera, during the pandemic. They did a terrific job and they worked very closely with all the direct providers. And I think partly through that multi-month effort, it, it became clear that, that there was some opportunity on an ongoing basis to look at housing insecurity, particularly with some of the pressures we've seen. And so I did urge that those two in particular, United Way and Community Foundation, really take a regional approach because, you know, this is, this is not a problem that will be solved only by the city. Of course, we really need more money from the nation and the state, and I hope that will happen. But at least regionally, and, and we felt that, I felt and others, that those two would be a good regional convening place. So I think the hope is a couple of things. One is to help coordinate and align the investments, both public and philanthropic, trying to deal with housing. And two, to try to help measure and monitor the impacts that we're making to see that we're moving in the right direction. I believe housing first will be the, kind of the motivating principle there to, to try to get housing insecurity lowered, working toward the, the, the realization of housing as a right. That's a, that's a big challenge and it's hard to do. That's a, that's a big challenge and it's hard to do as a single region in the face of other issues. But I think that group can really help us regionally and in a focused way to steer money and to assess how we're doing on both of those things with a wide table at which the city will be a strong presence, but not alone with, with many other partners.
Thank you. Just a follow-up to that because funding is such a huge piece of affordability with housing. As, as we all know, as we, you know, certainly as I work with the Plan Commission. Do you anticipate, again, that we will be getting some additional help from the feds and the state with respect to the dollars that we need to, to provide that housing? Again, it's, it's difficult without the proper funding. I'm not even sure that locally we have the resources to be able to garner, you know, what's, what's going to be required here.
Well, those are really important questions. I, just to answer briefly, I think we, we have COVID-related funding, which is helpful, and we may get more of that in the new administration for this short run period, however long that, that lasts. And that's really important for some of the emergency shelters and hotel isolation space and other things like that, emergency shelter expansions and such. I, I think in the longer run with the housing first model and the principle that everybody should have safe and decent housing that's not emergency shelter, but that's, that's reliable housing, that is a huge money question. You know, locally, we're doing a lot with, with many hundreds of units. We're leveraging the Housing Development Fund that you all helped create some years back, a few years back. We're, we're trying to do all we can leveraging with the CDFI-friendly Bloomington, which has brought in almost $30 million of funding. And as I mentioned, we're making progress. But I, I mean, ultimately, we do need federal and state help with this. Housing money goes quickly when you start looking at the numbers that we have. I, I do like to remind people that, you know, the Bloomington Housing Authority is housing several thousand people every night in public housing through primarily Section 8 vouchers, but also a couple hundred units that we own. And, and they have a waiting list of 700 people when they open their waiting list. And they don't leave it open most of the time. There's desperate need for more housing. And so I, I think there is a lot we can do locally, but we, we, partly we continue to need to pressure and push state and national leaders to do more with us as well.
Okay. Any further questions? Councilmember Smith?
Hi. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. I appreciate it. And I'm, I'm so glad that, that you have outlined the, the different steps that the city has taken, you know, over, over the course of the last, you know, several months. I think it's really important that people know that. And, and so I have two questions, kind of. Is there a number, a dollar figure that the city, you can say that the city has put forth and expended to help decrease the homelessness issue in our town?
You know, I'm actually trying to get that number. There's, of course, a lot of direct personnel costs and program costs that we, we don't, we, the short answer is I don't have that yet. It's certainly a large figure. And then besides the personnel, there's infrastructure, housing support that we give to partners in the building of housing. But I, I do believe we need more, but I am going to try to get that number. I just couldn't get it for you yet tonight. I did, I'm looking for it.
Well, thank you. And is there any possibility that we get additional HUD certificates for, for Bloomington Housing Authority or for the city to be able to distribute?
Not that I'm aware of, Councilmember Smith. We, we have gotten some special HUD appropriation through our Hand Department with COVID support. And, and I didn't mention Dora Sims, which is a major mistake, given the president of this council, who is so kind to my wife, by the way, thank you. But, but Council, Dora Sims at Hand, of course, has been directly involved in the production of so much housing. And Amber Scobie, who runs the Housing Authority, is working very hard to scrub and scrape and find resources. I do think you'll hear an announcement out of the Bloomington Housing Authority in the days and weeks ahead, irrelevant to this, but I'm, I'm not at liberty to share that yet. She swore me to that. And I'd be happy to get that information as soon as we can.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And by the way, thank you all for such kind words about my wife. She appreciates it and I, I'll pass those all along to her. Thank you.
Point of order, President Sims.
Yes.
We've now passed the 20-minute, 20 minutes allotted for this in our schedule, so we could either...
Well, actually, we had just, I wanted to let him finish. And can my colleagues indicate how many more would like to ask questions? Okay, I see two more. If we have no, do we have any objections from colleagues to finish these two questions? Okay, we'll have two more. Does that meet what we need to do? Councilmember Flaherty?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Volan?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yes, shouts out to both Don Johnson and Dora Sims, who still works for you for the nine days at least, I think. So good that you, that you mentioned her. The, I appreciate the report. I know that the challenge that you're facing right now is, that you're trying to address with your administration is a difficult one. One thing, though, that occurs to me in listening to you speak is we have this tremendous opportunity a couple of blocks away with the new, with the old hospital site. I'd like to know, based on what you said tonight, to what extent, how much housing you plan or hope to see on this site with land that will soon be owned by the city that will be social housing or housing that could be used by the Bloomington Housing Authority or otherwise for very low income or transitional, you know, housing first type housing?
Thank you for that. And I'll be brief. I know yours is time. But the master plan, which was released last week and shared with the Redevelopment Commission on Tuesday this week outlines, I'm sorry, can you hear me all right?
Yeah, sorry. I, I, mine was breaking up. Go ahead.
The, the master plan, which was recently shared with the Redevelopment Commission, contemplates the development of hundreds of units of housing. I think it's in the range of 600 to 800 units of housing in that area. That plan, and I assure and am confident that the community will want to see significant amount of that housing be dedicated housing. We have not yet, and I think the community needs to go through a process to think about how much, what percent, what kinds. That will be an ongoing discussion. That was not part of the master plan to say X hundred like this or 200 like that, or how much affordable. I think it's always a question of, of cost as well as opportunity. So that's really an open question. I think we expect to have a wide range of kinds of housing there from, from market rate to very affordable. And it's a community discussion and balance that'll still, still needs to be made.
Well, I, you know, this land is unique in that the city actually will own the land and can therefore be very specific about... What we...
Are others losing audio? Council, Councilmember Volan, you're breaking up. I'm going to go to Councilmember Scambler, and then we'll come back to you. And then we'll come back to you, if that's okay. Councilmember Scambler?
Thank you. Mayor, thank you for the report. Obviously, this issue is top of mind for all of us, so I appreciate you checking in on it. I'm really interested in what you said about the need for a regional approach to this issue, something that just spans more than just what goes on in Bloomington. Could you say more about that? Could you say more about why that's necessary and what, what a regional effort could look like or what's being discussed so far?
Sure. And, and you know, our, our housing partners and the providers, I think, all agree on this, that Bloomington serves as a regional hub in so many ways, including for emergency housing and affordable housing, sheltering and such. And we know that many of our surrounding counties don't have resources like this, but they do have people who need them. So we want to work together with our entire region to think about housing security. Often, a best location for somebody who may be experiencing homelessness is to go back home to get support, to be back around their families and, and their networks. But that's complicated. It's hard to use, just accrued, it's hard to use city money to support someone going back and living in Owen County if, if that's a better place for them for a housing first and long-term options. But, so we really need to coordinate with not only our county friends, but also the, the surrounding area. And I think the United Way and Community Foundation can really be helpful in that conversation.
That's helpful. Thank you for that context.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan, would you like to try briefly to finish up your thought? You had frozen before.
Yes, thank you. I've tried to close some programs in hopes that my stream would come through better. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah, yes.
All right. So yeah, just the follow-up question, Mr. Mayor, is unlike, you know, market rate PUDs where we have very limited ability to influence what gets built. Here, the city will own the land, and so we can really dictate anything that we like. It seems like there's no better opportunity to make a commitment to dozens or hundreds of units being made available to lower, very low income residents. What, you know, I know that ultimately the city, the community is going to decide altogether what we want, but you have a great deal of influence here. What would you say?
Well, I, I agree with you. I think this is a really important opportunity to try, try to create a, a fair and just and equitable community that has housing for all. I think I will expect and be advocating for a wide range of housing types there. I think it is a great opportunity for us. I'm very excited about it. I appreciate the support to invest the money to, you know, to buy the land. And we're going to have to invest more money in infrastructure. We started talking about that in the RDC also. And those investments will help us do things that we want for our community. We're going to be listening as we continue to listen to the community about all those goals. Absolutely centered to my thinking about that is it creates really powerful opportunities for affordable housing.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton, for speaking with us this evening and answering questions. Thank you very, very much. And I'd like to thank my council members for indulging us to take a few minutes to hear more on this very, very important topic in our community. Okay, do we have any council or reports from council committees? Okay, seeing none. I do have two, quickly as I can. On January 20th, the Public Safety Committee, of which I chair, had a, a meeting for the intent, for the intentions of receiving information from our citizens that are experiencing homeless, homelessness, those that are advocates and supporters of that population. And we also expected to hear from some of our social service agency partners who assist in that matter. We had scheduled it for two hours, had many community members participate. In fact, we reduced the time limit for comments to three minutes so we could accommodate everyone that was in attendance. Very robust discussion, very emotional, very passionate from many of our speakers. One thing that I will highlight is that we were asked by someone during the meeting, what did we intend to do with the information and/or with some of the questions that were asked? And I just want to let the public know that, and I'm speaking for myself. I think I can speak for the committee members as well as council members at this point. There's much information. I'm still going through and determining where to direct some of those questions. There weren't a whole lot, but there were some. And very possibly to give more thought and maybe address some of the issues and comments that were brought up. So I will also say, there was a comment on some of our citizens who expressed disappointment that the mayor or city staff was not present. And I, as chair, take full responsibility if that's such a case. But it was a choice to not invite any one from city staff because the purpose of this meeting or the intent was, was to receive information from those that were most affected and closest to the unhoused population. And so I just want to thank everyone for participating in that. And sure, we'll hear more about that later. Lastly, if I may, part of the packet addendum today is the 2021 assignments, council assignments to our standing committees. We do have nine standing committees after legislation. And some of the previous committees were rolled into other committees. So now we have a total of nine. And I am happy to say that, that allowed every council member to be the chair of one standing committee each. Again, that notice is in the packet addendum. Should there be any changes after tonight? And after further discussions, there may be one or two. Then we will announce that and make sure that they're posted, any corrections are posted again. And thank you for that. Did you have anything, Mr. Lucas?
I, I would suggest if you're intending as, as council president to, to make appointments to those various committees, that the, those appointments actually be read out loud so that they can be included in tonight's meeting record. So I know it might be a bit tedious, but I guess going through those and listing out the members of each of the committees.
Okay, not tedious at all. Thank you. And it's my pleasure. I will go down the list. We'll start with the Administration Committee. That will be chaired by Councilmember Volan. And members will be Councilmembers Scambler, Flaherty, and Sims. Moving to the Climate Action and Resilience Committee. That will be chaired by Councilmember Matt Flaherty. And members will be Councilmembers Rallo, Piedmont Smith, and Smith. Community Affairs Committee. That will be chaired by Councilmember Rallo. And members will be Councilmembers Volan, Sandberg, and Scambler. Housing Committee will be chaired by Councilmember Rosenbarger. Members will be Councilmembers Flaherty, Sims, and Piedmont Smith. Moving to the Jack Hopkins. I drew a blank on the two S's. Social Services Committee. That will be chaired by Councilmember Sandberg. Members of that committee will be Councilmembers Smith, Scambler, and Rosenbarger. Moving to the Land Use Committee. That will be chaired by Councilmember Piedmont Smith. And members of that committee will be Councilmembers Rosenbarger, Flaherty, and Volan. Public Safety Committee will be chaired by myself, Councilmember Sims. And members will be Councilmembers Sandberg, Volan, and Piedmont Smith. Sustainability Development Committee will be chaired by Councilmember Scambler. And members will be Councilmembers Sandberg, Smith, and Rallo. And finally, the Transportation Committee will be chaired by Councilmember Smith. And members will be Councilmember Rosenbarger, Rallo, and Volan. So thank you very, very much, council staff, for that reminder. Now we'll move to public comments. First, I'd like to remind everyone that you can indicate your intent to speak by using the raised hand function in Zoom and/or sending us a note in chat. And I would like to remind members of the public that you may speak on matters of community concern not listed on the agenda at one of the two public comment opportunities. Citizens may speak at one of these periods, but not both. Speakers will be allowed five minutes, but this time allotment may be reduced by the presiding officer if numerous people wish to speak. How many do you see offhand, Mr. Lucas?
I believe I see four hands raised, five now, and I know there may be one more that comes in through chat. that comes in through chat. So six at the moment.
Okay, as it stands now, I think we'll allow five minutes. Who do we have first?
First, we have, and just five minutes per speaker would total 30 minutes. So if that's the council's desire, and now I see another.
I'm sorry, do we have, well, okay, let's back up. How many do you see? I'm sorry, I can't see what you see.
I see maybe seven, seven folks now who'd like to speak. Six hands raised and one message that came in over chat, and more coming in each moment. So I think giving folks a moment to, to find the raise hand feature or to type in their message may be a good idea. Again, maybe eight folks now at the moment.
Okay, and seeing that we have that many and maybe more coming, do I need to, can I just change the time limit? And I'd like to say two minutes to accommodate everyone?
Yes, the person I can adjust the time given.
Thank you. We'll go two minutes each person, and hopefully we can accommodate everyone. Who do we have first?
First up, we have Tassi Ganati, who should be ready to.
Hi, thanks so much for giving me your time. And thank you, Mayor, for attending this meeting and speaking about an issue that I know is really close to a lot of our hearts and that we've been spending a lot of time on. I just wanted to rectify one inaccuracy. The tents were first cleared from Seminary Park before the holidays. That was the first clearing. It was earlier that week. And then later, when the gentleman died, we had returned. Most of the staff members of the community had redeemed their things from parks and rec. But it's possible he lost belongings in that first sweep. The second sweep was just days before the winter shelter opened, which it sounds like you did know from the beginning that it was coming. So I wonder why we couldn't have dovetailed those more closely and that it meant that there were days where there were people who didn't really have access to those extra beds there and who, it was very heavily utilized last night. There were about 30 people in line as of 8:30, which was really great. And that brings me to, I know IU South Bend has, or sorry, until I work for IU, I know that South Bend has recently opened a 24-hour warming station. And I worry a little bit about our friends sort of waiting until nine o'clock at night to get into the low-barrier shelter. I think it's an amazing, amazing thing. But I wonder if there's a possible way that we could sort of investigate that as a next step. And finally, I'm going to go back to those CDC guidelines that say, don't disturb encampments. Both Missoula and Denver have embraced this. They're as cold, if not colder than we are. And they've actually helped people shore up their winter camping stations. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up.
And before we get started, I think I'm at two minutes apiece with 20. Then is the limit, will the limit be 10?
Yes, unless.
Yes, okay. So if we can identify those, that would be appreciated. Okay, who's next, please?
Next up, we have, the screen name is Moko Green, but that may be the Monroe County Green Party. They should be able to unmute.
Thank you. Can you identify yourself, please? You have two minutes.
Thank you, Councilman Sims. My name is Will Staley, and I'm with the Monroe County Green Party. And with the homelessness situation and with the ever-increasing home prices, and I know Bloomington is building more and more apartment complexes and also building duplexes and other housing types. However, that hasn't really solved the home prices and lower, and lower rent. My question is, what's the likelihood for the city council and Bloomington in general to either increase or pass an additional low housing income tax credit in order to help folks with rent or be able to purchase homes for themselves? And I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Staley. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Jim Shelton.
Good evening, Council. Jim Shelton with the chamber, but speaking again on behalf of CASA, our Court of Point Special Advocates. I want to make sure everybody knows that we have a training sessions coming up in just about, well, just under three weeks. Starts February 8th. We'll run through March 3rd. Applications are due just about now. So we need people to step up and volunteer. We've got about 27 children right now, waiting for somebody to volunteer to advocate for them as they're in the court system because their parents have abused or neglected them. So please think about this. It's a wonderful volunteer opportunity. The next training session after this won't be until June. So this would be a good time if this is something you've been thinking about. But if you need more information, go to monroecountycasa.org. There's a volunteer link that has a frequently asked question page and a bunch of other info. Or you can call 333-2272 and talk to the staff and get any concerns you might have answered. So thank you for that opportunity to spread the word.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Nicole Johnson.
Hi, Ms. Johnson, you have two minutes.
Hi, thank you so much. So I appreciate the updates and everything. There are some alternative storylines happening here I'm not getting into because I only have two minutes. What I want to say is thank you, everyone in Bloomington who has helped for their continued support of the most vulnerable in our community. But we, this isn't enough. Monroe County has 150,000 people in it. And if numbers, published numbers hold true, that will put about 7,000 of our friends and families into an eviction process come the end of this month. Our houseless community is going to grow regardless of the mitigation attempts by existing agencies and both this city government and Monroe County government combined. People are on average, according to statistics, over $5,000 in debt. And there is not one single current proposal in any level of government that is going to stop the fallout. It will not always be winter. It may be cold here, regardless of what everybody says. These tents are going to be needed when it's not winter. We're going to have an increase in our houseless population. The most important reason for adhering to the CDC guidelines or considerations for encampments until individual housing is because this summer, we are going to see large numbers of our friends and families in situations. There's no way that CARES money is going to stretch that far. I'm sorry. It's just not going to happen. And the evictions are going to proceed. And that's all I really have to say. And that's what needs to be looked at. We need to mitigate. For 50 years, Bloomington has been in a housing crisis. Mr. Smith, thanks so much for you acknowledging the mayor's account of the last few months. What about the last 50 years? I yield my time.
Thank you. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next, we have Greg Alexander.
Hi, Mr. Alexander. You have two minutes, please.
Great, thanks. My name is Greg Alexander. As you might imagine, I've used a lot of different channels to ask the city to remove things which were blocking the pedestrian right-of-way. Long story short, I haven't had much luck. So I was astonished to see police being used to remove homeless people from the right-of-way along the edge of Seminary Square. And not even because they were blocking the right-of-way, but simply because they had nowhere else to stay. The administration cited the danger to the people from being in the right-of-way. In fact, a homeless woman was recently killed in the right-of-way, but she wasn't camping. She was merely using pedestrian transportation. There's federal guidance that specifically recommends an eviction moratorium should apply to homeless people, and that homeless people should not be forced to move into congregate living situations. It's easy to forget that guidance came from Trump appointees. We're liberals. That's not how we do things. In 2017, we had a task force. They came back with a few concrete suggestions, one of which was really obvious. The city should provide toilets where homeless people congregate outdoors. Three years later, we're still sending police instead of porta-potties. We've had enough talk. It's not that complicated. We need to stop using police to punish homelessness. You need to act. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Marshall Bailey.
Hi, can you hear me?
We sure can. Go ahead, Ms. Bailey. You have two minutes.
My clock now. So my name is Marshall Bailey. I'm a Bloomington resident. I'm a military veteran. I'm a proud American. I've worked at the White House, Walter Reed National Military Medical Center, helping move warriors. I've worked at Pentagon. I came to Bloomington about two years ago, a month ago, I saw people getting kicked out of the park. Since then, I have physically been there during each one of the evictions. I'm going to state for the record that a lot of the statements that were made are factually inaccurate. There is constant gaslighting going on here, and systematic displacement of the unhoused homeless is also going on. Basically, when you kick people out of the park, you steal their belongings, those numbers go down, and you just repeat that process over and over and over. The numbers being reported, 20, down to 15, down to 12, down to eight, those numbers are factually inaccurate. Those weren't the numbers that were there, and those weren't even the numbers that scattered. The mayor made a series of statements. He referred to "we" in terms of setting up the city shelter by urging Reverend Gibmore. He used the term "we" to claim credit for the work the fire chief did. Basically, he's systematically displacing people. He sends the police down there every night, and they take the blame. Just so everyone knows, there was another eviction that occurred last night. No one knows about this, but this happened last night because he sends the police there every night. And I physically moved for the homeless over to the winter shelter. There's a way to do this if you're against homeless and there's a way not to. The way that you've executed this process is illegal a million different ways, from notice to destruction of personal property. I call on anyone with legal background to join a call to start filing lawsuits on this. That's it.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Who's next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Nathan Muchler.
Hi, Mr. Muchler. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. First off, I'd like to ask how, in the mayor's words, compassion and housing first equals removing people's tents? Because for some people, a tent is a home. I have in my notes, the mayor is misleading you. I'm going to say the mayor is lying to you. The number of beds available doesn't match one-to-one with the people outside. What about people who are on banned lists because of behavioral issues? What about people with substance abuse challenges? What about people who just want to stay with their family? Don't they deserve to sleep somewhere safe or do they deserve to be chased off into the night? Some words I heard tonight, someone at the meeting means that I'll sleep better tonight. I'm in a celebratory mood. Today is a good day, a renewed sense of hope. You know who doesn't have a renewed sense of hope? You know who's not going to sleep better tonight? And you know who might not say today is a good day? Our unhoused brothers and sisters who are chased and harassed around this town. They are not in a celebratory mood. They are not having a good day. They don't have a renewed sense of hope. It wasn't Donald Trump or Republicans who did this. Our mayor, our Democratic Party, our community did this. You recognize that who is in power has meaning. So use your power to do the right thing and stand up to our mayor. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Muchler. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Alex Goodlad.
Go ahead, Mr. Goodlad. You have two minutes.
Thanks. Hello. So I just want to just, you know, it, what we're hearing is that, you know, it's going to be great with Joe Biden as president and that, you know, we've gotten rid of the fascists and we'll have less misinformation. Well, we're getting misinformation at the city level. And I think we should remember that even at the national level, not much better. We have a guy, Joe Biden, who like lied about whether he was arrested at the Nelson Mandela protest. So, yeah. And I just want to get into how Hamilton is, is not just misleading, but lying to kind of second Nathan, what Nathan's saying. He completely omit, like, he talks about, you know, urging Forrest, but, but he doesn't listen to Forrest when, when he says that there is 39 people at one point in Seminary. He acts like that number lowered. And we brought this number to his attention countless times. And all we get is just, you know, disingenuous shrugging from, from Andrew Krebs and Mary Carmichael. And even Andrew Krebs admits in the city page that, yeah, both numbers are true. But why, why the fuck is Hamilton just not acknowledging that number at all? Why is the city in their statement? Like, keep on messing up that number. I, like, why is the city fricking lying? And, and he talks about unsafety. Why does that not apply to Wheeler when conditions are unsanitary? Like, oh, safety is important, but it's not important with, with Wheeler mission. And, 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 oh, it's illegal to camp, but, oh, it doesn't matter when Wheeler's breaking probably the First Amendment with holding Sunday services. And I'm tired of it. I'm mad. Nobody seems to care. And if you're really going to, like, claim credit, John Hamilton, you should.
Mr. Goodlad, I'm sorry, but can you finish up? Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we have time for anyone else, or do we have any more?
Yes, I think we have two more. And that would total 10. Next is Sam Curry.
Yes, hello. I want to voice my support tonight for measures to increase the availability of housing in Bloomington. Bloomington is a thriving, growing community, and it is important that as the population grows, so does the availability of housing. I understand the council will soon be considering a proposal to allow a greater range of housing types in certain zones of the city. I hope the council will approve of this plan and similar measures to support new housing. This issue is especially important for me as a renter who has seen his rent increase every year he has lived in the city. And I hope the council considers the interests and needs of renters as they make their decision on this matter, as renters form an important part of the community. And I do think a greater availability of housing will help address some of these problems with rising rents. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comments. And who do we have finally, Mr. Lucas?
Finally, we have RM. I think that may be Renee Miller.
Good evening.
Hi, Ms. Miller. You have two minutes. How are you?
I'm okay. I'm okay. I'm a little discouraged. I've been coming to meetings now, city council meetings for two years. And I didn't start really being vocal until fairly recently. And what I'm noticing is there is a lot of gaslighting. And I think we're going to need a fact checker. In fact, I know we need a fact checker. The mayor spoke a lot of falsehood. Shame on him. One in particular that really made it, he was just talking like he wanted to sound like, he was romanticizing what he was doing, saying that he waited until after the holiday. Let me tell you what wasn't after the holiday. There was a sweep on Seminary Park on Veterans Day. Veterans Day, what day did Veterans Day fall on? Anybody know? Did anybody there tell me? I think it was December. Don't quote me exactly. It was the 11th, 13th, but it certainly wasn't after the holidays. Shame on, shame on him. I mean, displacing veterans, or anyone for that matter, and then pretending like he waited until after the holiday is, is just criminal. Criminal behavior. You need to fact check him. You need to fact check yourselves. You're letting all this just like seem all romanticized and pat each other on the back. There's a lot to this. I hope that eventually some, some people actually listen. And I do appreciate the few council members that actually do listen. And I know who they are, and I'm glad they're in my district. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Miller. I want to thank everyone in the public for their comments. Before we move on, I would like to remind everyone that that was one of two public comment opportunities that we have on the agenda. And please also remember that citizens may speak at one of these periods, but not both. So we'll have another period later on the agenda. Moving on, do we have any appointments to boards or commissions this evening? Okay, seeing none. We're moving down to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Mr. President, I move
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2101 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Council, sorry about that. Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, that was passed 9-0. Will the clerk please read?
Yes. Ordinance 2101, to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning seven acres of property from residential medium lot R2 to employment EM regarding 1600 West Fountain Drive Comcast petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2101 would rezone seven acres from residential medium lot to employment. Your land use committee recommendation is due pass 400.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, who do we have here to present this evening?
President Sims.
I'm sorry.
I move that ordinance 2101 be adopted.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Scambalory couldn't get unmuted. Thank you, Councilmember Smith. And thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Mr. Lucas, who do we have to present this evening?
I believe we have Eric Grulick from the Planning Department, as well as representatives from Comcast, and if any of them need to be able to unmute themselves, they can send me a message via chat, but I believe Eric Grulick is here to kick things off.
Thank you, Mr. Grulick. Are you prepared?
Yes, I'm ready whenever you guys are.
Go right ahead, thank you.
Okay, great. Hopefully everybody can see my screen.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So as mentioned, this is a request for Comcast for a property that they have at 1600 West Fountain Drive. The property is zone R2, which is residential medium lot. So the petitioners are requesting to rezone this property from the R2 district to the employment district in order to allow for a new building to be constructed on the property. So this is located on Fountain Drive, just west of Adams Street. Fountain Drive has a mix of land uses along it. South of the railroad tracks, you have a mix of single-family, multifamily uses. However, as you proceed west on Fountain Drive, just north of the railroad tracks, you encounter predominantly industrial-type uses. Just across the street from this, you have JB Salvage and Auto Parts. Further up the street, you've got Plumbing Services, Harold Fish Supply, a wide range of industrial uses along Fountain Drive. So this site has been used by Comcast for several decades. Over the past 20 years or so, they've undergone several expansions on the site. At each of those expansions, because the property is owned residential, they have received a use variance to allow for new buildings to be constructed, and so they received a use variance at each of those times. However, the use variance process is no longer in the Unified Development Ordinance. So the only recourse for them to allow for any work on the site is to request a rezone. So with this petition, what they are requesting would be to remove the northern utility building that is on the property building. So the area of the expansion would still occur within the developed area. So you can see there's asphalt and concrete immediately adjacent to this building on the west side. That is the area that the building would be expanded in. This would also allow for them to take down a communication array that is on the property and bring that inside the building. So the site is predominantly used for utility trucks, for utility trucks, for service vehicles, storage of equipment. So this is classified as a contractor's yard in the zoning code, and so that is why they are requesting to rezone this to the employment district where that use is a permitted use. So we do have a site plan kind of showing the site as it exists. As you recall, from the aerial, there are several trees, tree area that surround the overall buildings and parking area. None of the trees would be removed as part of this petition. There's also a sinkhole that is located on the west side of the property. So that, as well as all the trees that are on the site, would be set aside in a conservation area. As I mentioned, the building addition, which you can see by this blue arrow, would just be occurring over areas that are already developed on the site. So no additional disturbance in any of the trees or the sinkhole areas would be required. So the comprehensive plan has this site kind of a split designation. The east half of the site, or at least one-third of the site, is designated as mixed urban residential, while the western two-thirds is designated as employment center. So the kind of split designation on this property pretty much matches of how the property has been developed. So the petitioner's request to rezone the property to employment would match the designation of the comprehensive plan for the portion of the site that is facilitating that use. So the eastern one-third of the site, where it is designated as mixed urban residential, this would all be set aside in a preservation easement to protect the existing trees, which would also act as a buffer between this use and some of the single-family uses to the east of this. Immediately to the north of this, you have a church, and then as well, another industrial use immediately to the north as well. So there would be a protection against some of those uses as well with the preservation easement. So as I mentioned, the kind of split designation on this site, the portions that are zoned employment center, the comprehensive plan encourages professional business offices, light assembly plants, flexible tenant facilities, the kind of uses that are occurring on the site now, which also allow for some light manufacturing uses, which, as I mentioned, matches what is on the site currently. So the Plan Commission did review this petition and found that the rezoning of the site to employment would match the comprehensive plan, would further many elements within the comprehensive plan, including environmental preservation, and allow for the use that is on the site to continue. And so they did vote nine to zero to forward this to the common council with just the two conditions of approval, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go any further, does the Chair of the Land Use Committee care to offer a report?
So the Land Use Committee met last Wednesday, and it was a relatively short meeting. We talked about this proposal we heard from two representatives of the developer, and our questions were pretty minimal. We asked about a sidewalk along the front edge of Fountain Drive, and we're told that there would be a side path that the city has long planned to put in there, and that the developer would pay into, towards the cost of that side path, rather than putting in their own sidewalk, so that it all, you know, can be done in one project. And there was a question about the large tech tower that's on the site that's going to be removed because those transmissions are now being done from elsewhere. And generally, we were, we were concerned, of course, about looking at the environmental impacts, but there is an easement through the course of this particular petition. It was found that this easement was not recorded, so that will be recorded, but that will protect the forested parts of the site. And I think we were pretty much convinced that this was a low-impact petition because the building that they're building is going to be in the place of a different building that's already there, and they're not going to disturb any new land. It's just going to, it's already, it's already, the new building will be built on land that's already been disturbed, either with an existing building or a parking lot. So we voted 4-0 to forward this to the whole council.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from councils? Councilmember Rallo?
Well, I have a question, but it just cursed me. Did we want to hear from the representative from Comcast before we proceed? Mr. President?
Well, if he has anything to offer, I thought, Mr. Grulick.
Has Mr. Grulick covered it?
I believe so. Mr. Grulick, does a representative from Comcast care to address us this evening?
Yes, Matthew Kelly is representing the petitioner.
Thank you. Are you ready, Mr. Kelly?
There we go. I'm sorry, that's, I'm working from my phone. But yes, we are in support of this, and it is a terrific opportunity to get that tower removed. So local residents and the city should hopefully appreciate that, and we are looking forward to working with the city to get this accomplished. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. I believe we have staff and petitioner here for questions. Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I realize that this is a rather benign impact, because the impact already exists, and it's expanding in an area that's already been developed. But, Mr. Grulick, I wondered about you, the rendering you placed up for us showed a sinkhole, and I believe a 20-foot buffer as per code, is that correct? I'm not hearing Mr. Grulick.
Are you there, Mr. Grulick?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think I may have cut out there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. On the west side of the site, that was required to be set aside with previous use variances. For whatever reason, that kind of fell through the cracks, but we'll make sure that that does get resolved on this time. There would be no encroachment within that sinkhole area. You know, the area of disturbance would be on the north side of the site, and as we mentioned, that's in an area that's already been developed.
Yes, so what I'm seeing is a sinkhole boundary and then a 20-foot buffer. Is that correct? I can't read the writing.
It should be a 25-foot buffer, but yes.
25-foot buffer, I forgot code. So my question is, so there's parking adjacent to that, and so we know that, you know, parking leaves oils and metals and things like that. Just out of curiosity, I'm not saying that, you know, that what is, that this would prevent my vote in the affirmative, but I'm curious about whether we review that the runoff from this parking lot goes into that sinkhole. Do you happen to know?
So that is, that is not something, so I do believe there is, certainly doesn't allow for stormwater detention to be directed to a sinkhole. You know, there's nothing that necessarily says that you cannot divert anything. So I'm not, I'm not sure if the parking lot has a standing curb around the perimeter of it. You know, certainly that would act to dissuade or prevent water from running into that sinkhole. Yeah, I don't know if the petitioner has that specific information or not.
I just wanted to flag that because it's been a concern of mine that, you know, that we do have that buffer by code, but if we have the discretion of a PUD, we might want to consider in the future, you know, where the runoff from a parking lot, and this is quite a small parking lot, there's not much in the way of vehicle parking, but, you know, you could see that being problematic if it flows into a sinkhole, you know, even with the 25-foot buffer. So if we have discretion to somehow mitigate that, I think it might be a future consideration. So that's the nature of my question. So thank you for addressing it.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Do we have any further questions from council members? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public for public comment on ordinance 21-01. I will remind everyone that if you would like to speak, you can indicate by using the raised hand function in Zoom, or you can send us a message on chat. Do we have any takers, Mr. Lucas?
No, I don't believe so.
Thank you. Give it just a few more seconds. Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to council. Do we have any further council questions? Seeing none, do we have council final comments? Can I say a hand, Councilmember Volin? No? No, okay. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I'll just, for the benefit of the public, briefly mention that this was discussed at greater length during the committee meeting last week, and some comments were made there. And I know Councilmember Piedmont Smith gave our report, but just given the relative paucity of questions and comments tonight, I didn't want people to think that we haven't duly considered this, and so, yeah, just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Just reiterating what I said before, that maybe for future code considerations and when we have the discretion of PUD, which of course is one of the considerations, is demonstrable public good, that we might consider features like this CARSE feature that might be receiving more or less directly, you know, runoff from an impervious surface. So just to put that out there for consideration for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Volin?
Yes, I, as Councilwoman Flaherty has said, you know, I found very little problem with this proposal. But I did want to say, a reaction to something Councilmember Rallo said, the notion that if it were a PUD, we might have some more control over it. I mean, it's my understanding that the UDO, the new version of the UDO was designed to reduce arbitrariness of PUDs. But with that reduction has come a lack of ability to control, for council members to have some control over things. And in fact, what we're looking at here is a rezone, not a PUD, which is, you know, we're going to be seeing more of those than PUDs in the future, simply because PUDs really aren't, you know, going to happen anymore, at least not very often, is my prediction. So I don't know if we entirely bargained for the change of the UDO. I don't know whether we should be concerned about it. I'm just something that, having served on land use for a while, I'm a little concerned about, you know, some of the missed opportunities that had the emphasis on PUDs has removed from our ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Volin. Do we have any other final comments from council members? Okay, seeing none, are we ready for the question? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 21-01?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith? Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. That is adopted 9-0. We'll move down to legislation for first readings.
President Sims, I move that ordinance 2104 be read, introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you, it's been properly moved in second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims? Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes nine zero.
And are you ready for me to read?
Yes, I was waiting. I didn't know if Councilmember Flaherty had anything. Will the clerk please read?
Yes. Ordinance 2104, to amend Title VIII of the Bloomington Municipal Code, oh dear, entitled Historic Preservation and Protection, to establish a historic district regarding the Core Building Historic District. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter 8.20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled List of Designated Historic and Conservation Districts. In order to designate the Core Building, the building located at the southeast corner of parcel number 53080510058000009, located at the corner of West First Street and South Rogers Street in the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, as a historic district. Built in 1947, the Core Building still retains its physical integrity, architectural significance, and association with the history of healthcare and medicine in Bloomington. While it was not the first hospital building constructed on the site, it is the oldest surviving building and is therefore part, a part of the city's healthcare legacy. The building is not listed on the National Register of Historic Places, nor has it been identified in the state or local historic sites and structures' inventories, so it has not been given a rating. However, this is likely because the building is physically attached to a larger hospital complex that was built in various decades of the late 20th century, which most architectural historians would find non-contributing. Regardless, the Core Building is one of the few examples of Art Deco architecture in Bloomington and stands as a testament to the evolution of the original Bloomington Hospital site from farmhouse to medical complex over the course of the 20th century.
Thank you very much. Moving to the next item in first reading.
Yeah, point of order. Mr. President, I think we should consider a motion to refer to committee first for this item before moving on to ordinance 2105.
You're absolutely right. I was thinking of doing those both together, but that wouldn't be proper. So, thank you. Will you wish to offer a motion, Councilmember Flaherty?
I'll actually defer to any committee chair, perhaps, who would like to, to move. We refer to a committee. I'll note that our code requires that we consider a motion to a standing committee prior to a motion to consider a referral to committee of the whole. So, I would await any motion from a relevant committee who would like to, so move, or any other member.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
I think Councilmember Piedmont Smith was going to do it, but I was going to.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I move that ordinance 2104 be referred to the land use committee.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. The clerk, please call the roll.
Sorry, and just a quick note that the, the motion is debatable. If any council members had, had a reason to, that they wanted to share or discuss as to why they would vote for or against the motion. If not, that's okay.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes.
With that motion, did you want to include a date and time?
My apologies, the clerk is correct. Thank you.
Absolutely right.
Since I made the motion, I suppose I should correct the motion. Do we have any other meetings already scheduled for next Wednesday? Or would it just be standing committee meetings that are decided tonight?
Well, it'll be standing committee meetings scheduled tonight, and then after these two, whether they go to standing committee or committee of the whole, then we still have the administrative, administration committee to consider.
Oh, okay. So, I'll amend my motion and, and say that I move that ordinance 2104 be referred to a hearing by the land use committee next Wednesday, January 28th.
27th.
27th, starting at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. Before we go to the roll, is it time for debate, Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any comments from council members? Okay, I'd like to comment if I may. And thank you for those, um, motion in second. We've heard from Mr. Hedrick on both of these. And I think, well, actually, on this one, we'll talk about the other one later. But I was wanting to refer it to committee of the whole. I think that in this particular ordinance 2101, I think that there will be discussion that will be valuable with all council members in attendance, having to do with property on the hospital site, and maybe some further discussion on the historic preservation process itself. So, that's my comment. But if before it can go to the committee of the whole, then we must consider if it goes to a standing committee, which is what we're doing correctly now. So, do we have any further comments? Okay. And Mr. Flaherty, on this one, and I know it's debatable, we're not seeking public comment on this, are we not?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Do we have any further comments from council? Okay, seeing none. Are we ready for the question? Will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 2101, I'm sorry, 2104, on this motion for referral?
Yes.
Mr. President, could you, excuse me, could you restate the motion is to go to committee of the whole, or to go to land use?
Land use committee.
Okay. Thank you.
I do. Do we need to repeat the motion before we're going further? Okay, thank you. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Sims?
No.
Flaherty?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Scambalory?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. And that fails seven to. Mr. Parliamentarian, before we go to the next one. Is the next motion for this to go to the committee of the whole?
Yes, that'd be correct. And just a quick point of information, the motion failed two to seven, or?
I'm sorry.
I think we normally say it that way.
Yes.
And yes, yeah, we could entertain now a motion to refer to committee of the whole. And I think by default for our code, that would be a 6:30 PM meeting.
That is correct.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. Do we have any debate or comments from council members? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly mention that I didn't have particularly strong feelings about where to send this or the petition to follow. And in particular, we wondered whether housing or land use would be a good fit. And I think historic preservation as a, as a commission is under the housing committee. But the two ordinances tonight about historic designations are commercial buildings, not houses, which made me wonder if land use was a better fit. And I, I don't have particularly strong feelings. And I thought committee of the whole might work well in this case. So, I just wanted to explain my thoughts there. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Do we have any more comments? Thank you. Moving to the second item on first readings.
Sorry, point of order. I think we do need to vote on, I think we would need to vote on the referral.
We need to vote on. Thank you. So, does not automatically go on the committee of the whole. Okay, thank you. Has there been a motion for it to go, is there a motion needed and second it? Thank you. We've got debate. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Oh. Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalory?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that is adopted nine zero. And I will remind everyone and the viewers, per statute, committee of the whole, and this ordinance will start at 6:30 next Wednesday, the committee meeting. Moving to the second item on legislation for first readings.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2105 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that passes nine zero. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis only?
Yes. Ordinance 2105, to amend Title VIII of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection, to establish a historic district regarding the Boxman Mitchell Building Historic District. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter 8.20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled List of Designated Historic and Conservation Districts, in order to designate the Boxman Mitchell Building, 424 and 1/2 South Walnut Street, as a historic district. The proposed district consists of two buildings. The northern, the northern building is a one-story wood-framed building with a red brick veneer on the northern facade facing an alley, and on the east facade facing South Walnut. The southern building is a two-story wood-framed building with a red brick veneer on the east facade. Both of these structures were built in 1925 by Ira Mitchell, one of the Mitchell brothers responsible for a string of commercial structures that were built along South Walnut in the 1920s. The Mitchell brothers left an indelible mark on the urban landscape of Bloomington. They built at least four brick commercial block buildings and a handful of brick homes along South Walnut, all of which survive to this day. These buildings are part of the architectural fingerprint of the city and form a recognizable pattern along its southern corridor. The building is also notable for its historical association with Henry Boxman, a local restaurant entrepreneur who operated Boxman's Restaurant from 1929 to 1958. Boxman gained national recognition for his food and also boasted the first neon sign and air-conditioned dining experience of Bloomington at this location.
Thank you very, thank you very much. And I will entertain a motion from any council member on committee referral. Councilmember Sandberg?
Mr. President, given our previous discussion, would it be appropriate to move that this also be referred to the committee of the whole?
I, I'll check with the parliamentarian. Thank you.
Unless Mr. Lucas wants to correct me, I think per the letter of our code, we should still vote on the referral to standing committee first. And if we want to, if that's something we want to reconsider and change in the future, we could do so, but.
That would require a motion and a second, correct? And if by chance it did, it didn't get either, I think we would discuss it. Councilmember Volin?
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2105 be referred to the housing committee.
Second.
Point of order. Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Yes.
If someone, perhaps Councilmember Volin or Councilmember Flaherty, could you refresh my memory? Is, is, if it fails, if the motion, if the proper sequence is to refer to a standing committee, and if that fails, is it necessary to have a motion to go to the committee of the whole, or, or does it proceed by default?
I'll defer to, to Councilmember Volin or Council Attorney Lucas, if they know I'm looking at our code now too, but I'm not able to read fast enough.
Mr. Lucas?
Well, I don't know if Councilmember Volin has, had something to add. My, I don't believe that's addressed in, in the local code. I do believe in an ordinance possibly from 2012 or 2013, there is a provision that states, absent a motion to refer to some other committee, a motion to introduce an item will, will include a referral to committee of the whole. But I believe that's conditioned on no standing committee existing that something could be referred to. I'd need to pull it up, but I would recommend for tonight's purposes, actually taking a vote on a motion to refer to committee of the whole.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin, did you have anything?
I missed the last thing Mr. Lucas said.
For tonight's purposes, I'd, I'd recommend considering a motion to refer to committee of the whole and actually voting on that motion.
While I objected to the, the motion for 2104, I'll withdraw the motion to refer to the housing committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Volin.
Sorry. One more item. I, the, the code is not clear on whether the council has to actually consider a motion to refer to the standing committee before, to a standing committee before committee of the whole, or must only prioritize a motion if, if one is made. I, I think in the absence of a motion to refer to a standing committee, the council could appropriately consider a motion to refer to committee of the whole.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. And that was, that's what I was getting at when I referred to if we didn't receive a motion and/or a second.
But as a point of order, just to.
Yes.
Mr. President Sims, I'll just read it. So, we're all on the same page. "Motions for referral to a standing committee shall be entertained before a motion for referral to committee of the whole." And it sounds, it's somewhat ambiguous, but I think, yes, if, if no motion is made, provided the opportunity was given, we could proceed to a motion to refer to committee of the whole.
Thank you. And Councilmember Volin has withdrawn his motion. Do, do we have any motions from any other council members? Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes, I move referral to the committee of the whole. Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. This is debatable. So, we have any comments from council? I'm sorry, council member, I'm sorry. Clerk voted.
Just to clarify the motion, Councilmember Sandberg, did you mean on January 27th at 6:30 PM?
I would, since there is another matter being heard at 6:30, I would leave it up to the president to order the agenda as to what goes first and second. Do you have a preference?
I, I just meant the committee of the whole is at 6:30 PM, correct?
Right. And we would then have two, two items to hear. So, that would kind of be up to our president's schedule, right?
Right. Just verifying the time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, but they would all be part of the committee of the whole, but the committee of the whole starts at 6:30. So, it would be sequential. So, thank you. This is debatable. Do we have any comments? Councilmember Volin?
Yes, I didn't speak up on 2104, because it was a judgment call. I don't agree, Mr. President, with the idea that the core building being on the hospital property itself merits that it needs to be heard by the committee of the whole. I think that the hospital property as a whole needs, it would be something to be heard by the committee of the whole, because it's a multifarious proposal. But we don't even know when it's going to come, and it's going to be a much larger package of legislation than this. Nevertheless, the majority has voted for committee of the whole. It, this is a very related, it's another historic property. It makes sense to hear it. It makes sense to hear it in committee of the whole, but I do want to say also that I find it to be really disappointing that there are so many questions about this very basic notion of procedure. We don't need to schedule, for example, the time at which this is heard, if it's being heard in a different meeting. We don't need to, I mean, the, the relative lack of interest that I find among some of my colleagues as to notions of procedure is a bit disappointing. And I would ask everyone to be more cognizant of it, you know, so that we don't have to go through this kind of debate every time. But in general, my, you know, I just want to express a mild concern here for enthusiasm for committee of the whole for items that are only marginally meritorious of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from any council members?
Okay, I'll make a final comment. My thoughts in the first place that this would be better served. Part of the reason for what you said, that it was part of the hospital property and, and thus the hospital reuse. And I thought that would be part of the debate that would be better served by all council, all nine members present. And that was the basis of my thought of referring to the committee of the whole in the first place. But to follow procedures, then we must consider a motion to refer to a standing committee is my understanding. Okay, do we have any other? Councilmember Volin?
We have always had the ability for all nine members to hear and debate issues at meetings like this one, regular session. I've often questioned what the merit of committee of the whole is when we can simply have a third reading. That's always been available to us. It's still available to us now. Just wanted to say that for the record. That committee of the whole doesn't confer us anything special, any special ability to discuss items that we can't do in the meeting we're in right now. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Are we ready for the question? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sorry about that. Okay, I believe we're starting with Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that passes or adopted nine zero. Ordinance 21 dash oh four and 21 dash oh five will be scheduled for the committee of the whole meeting 6:30 next week. Thank you. Now I think we need, last week, we had a administration committee meeting that wasn't heard during the session was to be considered at a different time. Mr. Lucas? We discussed this a bit earlier, but the, the question now is to move it to next Wednesday and as part, in this, as part of the administrative, administration standing committee. Is that the proper procedure?
Before we get into matters of council schedule, I believe we have an additional period for public comment.
No, no, no. We was talking about the administrative committee that wasn't heard last week.
That, that may be an item more appropriately discussed under council schedule. I.
Thank you.
The, the chair of that committee, I, I think that conversation should be under council schedule.
Thank you very much. Okay, and then we're now for additional public comment. We have a maximum 25 minutes set aside for this section. I will remind citizens that this is the second of your opportunity for public comment and citizens who spoke at the first may not be allowed to speak at this one. You will have five minutes unless we have very many people, then we may adjust the timeframe. Mr. Lucas, do you?
Yes, first up, we have Tina.
Thank you, Dana. Can you?
Good evening.
Is that your name?
Sure.
Is that your name? Thank you.
Sure, this is Tina Honeycutt. I appreciate the comments that we had, the first comment, so I'm not going to go back over all that's been going on. I am going to point out and ask that we really work on the fact that the pandemic is still raging and the city has done nothing to actually put in sanitation stations for unhoused neighbors and all of the public facilities that they were able to use during the day other than Shalom, for the most part are closed. And as such, we are going to see increases in COVID cases and we've seen that that's been happening. That's been reported in several meetings now. And the fact that this has been being talked about for so long. I mean, it's almost a year now that we've been dealing with COVID and there are still no handwashing stations in Seminary Park or in Switchyard Park. There are still no restroom facilities. And that doesn't do anything for our folks. You know, we have the great, the, the new shelter, which is greatly needed and has been greatly used already in the first day, but that's evening. That doesn't help during the day. I am so frustrated that we just keep talking and talking and watching people suffer and freeze and die and don't take care of basic sanitation for folks even. I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
I see a hand raised by RM. I'm not sure if somebody else.
Good evening, Renee Miller. Let's please, please not give half truths. Let's start fact checking everybody, please.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
I, I have a comment and I think everybody be able to have a second comment. I don't know why we're trying to mute the public and not give us a voice. Two minutes started out as five, now it's two. How about giving us each another two minutes? Please, President Sims, two more minutes each.
Ma'am, that is procedures. We had more people than the time allotted in the first session. That's why we went down to two minutes.
You know.
And, and the rules are that we will not.
Meetings until midnight. Now they're, they're over by nine o'clock. It's not even, it's not even talking anymore. We're not even being heard anymore.
Ms. Miller, I would just remind you that when we do those or have those long comments, those are comments during the legislation. These are public comments and it's for items not on the agenda. And the rules are that if you participate in one, you can't participate in the other. I'm so sorry.
So I'm going to echo what the last speaker said, and we really need to have some sanitation out in there for our public. I mean, just you and me out there, much less the homeless community.
Thank you.
Not being done. It's being done all over.
Mr. Lucas? Okay, do we have anyone else?
I, I don't believe we have any folks who cannot speak during the first public comment period.
Okay, thank you. Saying none. Now we move to matters of council schedule.
Yes, so thank you for your, your patience. I think as, as another council member pointed out, the administration committee has a holdover item from last year. Ordinance 2103, as it's been renumbered. That committee was scheduled to meet last week and that meeting was, was canceled. And the council extended the time for that committee to report to the February 3rd regular session in anticipation of a committee meeting next week. So I suppose the question to the, to the committee is what time to begin that meeting? Given that the committee of the whole will begin at 6:30.
Councilmember Volin, you're the chair of that.
I am the chair, but I am not in control of the committee of the whole, which has never put time limits on itself. So it's hard to predict when that meeting is going to be done. If the person who would chair the committee of the whole would commit to an end time for that meeting, then it'll be easier to schedule this meeting. I, although I would ask Councilmember Piedmont Smith, whose concerns pause the committee to vote to have a second meeting, if she can anticipate how much time she might like to have in that meeting in order to deal with it, because perhaps we can be done. If we start the meeting at 5:30, perhaps we can be done before committee of the whole. But otherwise, I would simply ask the committee of the whole to name a stop time now so that we can schedule this meeting afterwards. Open a debate.
Well, I'm not so sure you commit to a time on the committee of the whole with the presentation. My thought was that we would start the administration committee meeting at 5:30.
Here's the thing. Part of the point of the standing committee process is there are two meetings so that you don't have to have to go all night. If you decide you only need to an hour and a half and you guys wind up meeting more, well, you can always have a second meeting. So, you know, if, if the committee of the whole decides to have two hours, it's fine with me. 8:30 is an acceptable time to start admin committee. But, you know, I don't know that 45 minutes is going to be enough for us. Again, that's why I mentioned Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, did you have any comments on that?
I don't really understand why I should be involved. I'm not on the committee.
That's kind of what I was thinking. Mr. Lucas or Mr. Flaherty, you have any comments on that? What, okay, what I would suggest, and I, I think we're asking to have a time limit on the committee, and I'm not so sure that's proper. I would suggest we either schedule the administration meeting for 5:30 or I think if we have to, we can go as late as 9:45 to schedule standing committee. I would say 9:00 PM to, to make sure there's plenty of time. Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Volin?
I would prefer, I mean, the reason I, I asked Councilmember Piedmont Smith is that was her objections to the question of fiscal impact statements that was, that, that caused the the referral to a second committee hearing. If she has a presentation or, you know, like it, because right now I'm expecting that it's not going to be a particularly long discussion, in which case I'd be fine with a 5:30 meeting and I'll bring that meeting in on time. If it's, there's going to be any kind of, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to make space for Councilmember Piedmont Smith's concerns about that ordinance, which is why, because she, she expressed concern to the committee. So I, I apologize for putting her on the spot like that. But, you know, like I, I'm not sure how long those objections are going to take to hear. But my inclination at this point is to just say 5:30 and forego. But I would also point out that it is entirely in order to schedule the committee of the whole to end at a certain time. There is nothing wrong with it at all. We're just not accustomed to it. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I didn't realize I was the only one who had concerns about doing away with fiscal impact statements, but I don't want to get into the, the meat of that ordinance that is to be discussed by the administration committee next week. I'm not on that committee. But I understand now Councilmember Volin's point and I do plan to bring an amendment to strike that part of the ordinance. So if that has an impact on how long you think the committee will meet, then you can consider that.
Thank you. In discussing it as part of scheduling earlier, in understanding the main, well, not the main, but one of the, the topics that would be discussed mainly would be the fiscal impact statements. And having discussed that, we still thought an hour would be, or starting at 5:30 would be adequate time. So Mr. Flaherty or Mr. Lucas or the chair, is it proper to have a motion to start this administration committee at 5:30?
Mr. Chair, I move, I move as such, I so moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And, and the full motion is that the administration committee would meet on January 27th at 5:30 PM. Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? Any comments? Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, and I'm sorry, can you repeat the time again for me, please?
27th at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do, and that passes nine zero will be next Wednesday at 5:30 PM for all members that are on the administration committee. Any other matters on council schedule, Mr. Lucas?
Just to note that the council has a work session scheduled for this Friday. This work session would be an opportunity to hear about items that would be coming to the council for first reading at the February the 3rd regular session. Those items could include several ordinances, one of which is a petition from, that came out of the Plan Commission for a rezone along East Third Street. There is a, an ordinance for a water rate adjustment that I believe the utility service board has been considering that, that could come to the council. There's also an ordinance that several council members have been working to draft to put certain protections and procedures in place to protect individuals experiencing homelessness, that those sponsors may be ready to speak about this Friday. And finally, there is an annual, well, it's an interlocal agreement with the county for building code authority that, that would be a resolution to renew that agreement if the council desired, that, that may be ready for council consideration February the 3rd. I know that's a lot, so my, my general, my normal question is how many council members might be able to attend that work session? And I see most, if not all, the hands raised, so like we've been doing for months, we'll, we'll go forward with that work session. And again, thank you for working through the scheduling issues for next week tonight. I know that was a bit cumbersome, but that'll, that'll provide clarity for what's to happen next week. So thank you.
Thank you for your assistance. Thank my colleagues for their patience. Interesting running, trying to run a meeting with this script and trying to meet all the things that we need to meet. That is all of our business for this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All right, moved in second. Thank you all. Have a great night and we'll talk soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.